Good evening. My name is Melissa Williams and I serve as the President of the Washington County Board of Education. I would like to welcome the members of the Board of Education, the superintendent, staff, and the community to the Board of Education's Public Business Meeting. This evening, everyone is participating in this meeting using a telephone or an electronic device. It has always been the practice of the Washington County Board of Education to meet in person and to invite members of the public to the Board's meeting. Due to the COVID-19 pandemic, certain legal directives, and the need to safeguard the health of the community, it is necessary to participate in this public meeting by phone or electronic device. This evening's business meeting will be recorded and the public may access the public meeting now on Channel 99, Facebook, and on WCPS's website at wcpsmd.com/school-board/Board-meetings. The public comment portion of the meeting will not take place this evening. The Board of Education encourages the public to submit their comments in writing to boe@wcps.k12.md.us. Let me do that again. Any information sent to that email address will be distributed to Board members and the At this time, I'm calling the Public Business Meeting of the Washington County Board of Education to order. I'm requesting all Board members to identify themselves in alphabetical order so that we may determine if there is a quorum of the Board members present.
Peter Bickford is here.
Jacqueline Fisher.
Linda Murray is here.
Mr. Stauffer, are you here?
Stan Stauffer is here.
And Melissa Williams is here. Again, Mr. Ridenhour, are you here? Mr. Mackley, our student representative, are you here?
Chris Mackley is here.
Thank you, Mr. Mackley. Okay, so I have six Board members indicating their presence, and at this time, I declare that there is a quorum of the Board present. Our first item on this evening's agenda is approval of our agenda for the evening. Is there a motion?
Madam President, I move for approval of tonight's agenda. Jacqueline Fisher.
Thank you, Mrs. Fisher. Is there a second?
Linda Murray, aye, second.
Thank you, Mrs. Murray. Dr. Bishop, will you call the roll for the vote, please?
Bickford.
Aye.
Fisher.
Aye.
Gessford.
Aye.
Murray.
Aye.
Stauffer.
Aye.
Williams.
Aye.
Ann Mackley.
Aye.
All right, I have six affirmative votes. The student representative concurs with the affirmative vote. We have approved the agenda for this evening. We'll move on to approval of this evening's, oh, I'm sorry, we'll move on to the approval of the minutes as presented. Mr. Gessford.
Madam President, I move for the approval of the closed session minutes dated Tuesday, March 3, 2020.
Thank you, Mr. Gessford. Is there a second?
Peter Bickford, seconds.
Thank you, Mr. Bickford. Are there any additions or corrections to those minutes? Hearing none. Dr. Bishop, will you call the roll, please?
Fisher.
Aye.
Gessford.
Aye.
Murray.
Aye.
Stauffer.
Aye.
Williams.
Aye.
Bickford.
Aye.
Ann Mackley.
I did not vote on closed session, so I'm all abstained.
Thank you, Mr. Mackley. I have six affirmative votes, so the minutes of the closed session dated March 3, 2020, stand approved.
Madam President, I move for the approval of the business meeting minutes dated Tuesday, March 3, 2020.
Thank you, Mr. Gessford. Is there a second?
Mrs. Murray, second.
Thank you, Mrs. Murray. Dr. Bishop, will you call the roll for the vote, please?
Gessford.
Aye.
Murray.
Aye.
Stauffer.
Aye.
Williams.
Aye.
Bickford.
Aye.
Aye.
Ann Fisher.
Aye.
Mackley.
Aye.
Thank you, Dr. Bishop. I have six affirmative votes with the student member concurring, and the business meeting minutes dated March 3, 2020, stand approved.
Madam President, I move for the approval of the closed session minutes dated Tuesday, March 17, 2020.
Thank you, Mr. Gessford. Is there a second?
Bickford, seconds.
Thank you, Mr. Bickford. Dr. Bishop, will you call the roll?
Murray.
Aye.
Stauffer.
Aye.
Williams.
Aye.
Bickford.
Aye.
Fisher.
Abstain.
Gessford.
Aye.
Mackley.
Abstain because these are closed session, again.
Thank you, Dr. Bishop. I have five affirmative votes, one abstention from Mrs. Fisher. The student rep does not vote on closed session minutes, so with five affirmative votes, the minutes of the closed session minute, excuse me, closed session meeting dated March 17, 2020, stand as approved.
Madam President, I have a fourth motion. I move for the approval of the compliance checklist and written statement minutes dated Tuesday, March 17, 2020.
Thank you, Mr. Gessford. Is there a second?
Linda Murray, second.
Thank you, Mrs. Murray. Dr. Bishop, will you call the roll?
Murray.
Aye.
And I believe Mr. Ridenhour is there. Stauffer.
Aye.
Williams.
Aye.
Bickford.
Aye.
Fisher.
Abstain.
Gessford.
Aye.
Mackley.
Abstain.
Thank you, Dr. Bishop. I have five affirmative votes, one abstention from Mrs. Fisher. The student rep does not vote on the compliance checklist and written statement, so by a vote of five affirmative votes, the compliance checklist and written statement of minutes dated Tuesday, March 17, are approved. Thank you. As I mentioned earlier, there is no public comment this evening. However, the Board of Education encourages the public to submit their comments in writing We have no old business to conduct this evening, so we'll move ahead to new business, and our first item on the agenda under new business is this evening's consent agenda.
Good evening, Mrs. Williams. Dr. Michael, members of the Board, before you this evening are eight items for procurement that have been reviewed by the district's procurement review committee. I will note, item two is an item that is a carryover from the canceled meeting on March 17, and I'm available to answer any questions you may have on these items.
Thank you, Mr. Prue. Colleagues, any questions?
I can make the motion.
Please, Mr. Bickford. Thank you.
All right, this is Mr. Bickford making the motion to approve the awards, renewals, and procurements, digital curriculum for secondary education to Apex Learning Digital Curriculum Solutions at a cost of $343,200. Oh, did, you hear me? Okay, I think I muted myself.
You're good.
Okay. School bus and vehicle tires renewal to Donald B. Rice Tire Company at the unit prices for the listed service, and in accordance with the Goodyear manufacturer's school bus and passenger tires program pricing, less a 2% discount, and Maryland State contract pricing for Michelin, less a 2% discount. Unit price contract for cabling installation parts and equipment to high-performance cabling at the unit prices. Unit price contract for building control systems to Control Systems, Inc., at the unit prices. Technology education supplies, furniture, and equipment to Amtech at a cost of $322,333. Mathematics instructional resources to hand to mind at a cost of $252,033.93. Furniture and equipment for the new Sharpsburg Elementary School, the Vincent Rothgroth Academic Center Edition, and the Washington County Technical High School classroom renovation to Duron, Inc., at an approximate cost of $58,244.70. Impact Office Products LLC at an approximate cost of $83,376.32. And American Design Associates at an approximate cost of $130,330. And to rescind award of RFP 2020-27 Wide Area Network Services to select WCPS locations to hand feed and broadband.
Thank you for the motion, Mr. Bickford. Is there a second?
I second it. Linda Murray.
Thank you, Mrs. Murray. Is there any discussion, or do we have any questions for Mr. Prue?
Yes, I do. This is Mrs. Fisher. Item number six, can you explain why the costs are listed as approximate?
I believe, and Dr. Pugh is on the line, and she may have additional details, but I believe it is a price that may fluctuate dependent on the number of students that are provided, some of the kits.
No, I thought this was all furniture.
Item number six is the hand-to-mind resource. If your, item seven is the furniture, those items are approximate because as we actually outfit each classroom and each space, the numbers of each individual chair, desk, bookcase may slightly change as we outfit each unit. So we're getting, essentially, we're awarding unit prices with an approximate quantity.
Thank you.
Stan Stauffer, I have a question.
Go ahead, Mr. Stauffer.
Number six, the mathematics instructional resources, are these to replace existing ones in the classroom, or are these something brand-new, these manipulatives, or what? That's a pretty good sum, two quarter of a million dollars.
These are manipulatives going to every elementary classroom to supplement the essential curriculum, so it's an additional resource for teachers and students.
Well, is it replacing already existing ones, or?
Mr. Stauffer, listen. Just, go ahead, go ahead, Dr. Pugh.
Erin Anderson.
Yeah, I have the list of materials in front of me. These are new materials that haven't been used. The team put together kits for all of the elementary schools, similar to the stations that they have for reading. We really needed to bolster our stations for mathematics, so they're customized math manipulative kits, and then we, they created them, so there's some loose items, and then there's actually a virtual manipulative that would be very helpful for us to have right now, and daily math fluency. So it's brand-new, they just put it together, it is to supplement what they're doing daily.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome.
Any other questions? Okay, we'll move to the vote. The vote is on Mr. Bickford's motion for approval of this evening's consent agenda. Dr. Bishop, will you call the roll, please?
Wayne Ridenhour.
Aye.
Melissa Williams.
Aye.
Peter Bickford.
Aye.
Jacqueline Fisher.
Aye.
Michael Gessford.
Aye.
Linda Murray.
Aye.
Chris Mackley.
Aye.
Thank you, Dr. Bishop. I have six affirmative votes, with the student reps concurring with the majority. Motion carries. Our consent agenda has been approved. We'll move on to our next agenda item. The consideration of the Board of Education's Fiscal Year 2021 General Fund Operating Budget. Dr. Michael, Mr. Prue?
Yes, I'm gonna ask Mr. Prue if he could just give a general overview of the operating budget. We've had several work sessions on the operating budget at this point. We presented the information, we've been following carefully the county commissioners' progress on their operating budget. Obviously, that affects our budget substantially. We're also following the current commission, and so far, the state money that has been tentatively identified appears to be intact, and we hope that it is, and we're optimistic that the Board of County Commissioners will support the local share of the budget. But I would just ask Mr. Prue to make a few comments about the budget. Nothing's changed in recent weeks, unless the Board has revisions or deletions from it after the initial motion. Mr. Prue? Thank you, Dr. Michael. Board members, if you review the cover sheet to the supplement for this agenda item today, it does outline the many meetings we've had concerning discussion of the FY21 General Fund Operating Budget. I think the course of tonight really is, one, stay on our budget calendar that was presented and approved earlier in the year, but two, also, to solidify and firm up the actual ask of the local funding source so that they can fully proceed with their budget, understanding that the Board may have to come back and react to whatever is approved by the Board of County Commissioners in their general fund operating budget. But we do need a formal action at this juncture to move forward and to give them a real number to work with.
Thank you, Dr. Michael. Thank you, Mr. Prue. Is there a motion?
Peter Bickford makes a motion to approve the Board of Education's FY2021 General Fund Operating Budget.
Thank you, Mr. Bickford. Is there a second?
Mrs. Fisher, seconds.
Thank you, Mrs. Fisher. The motion is to approve the Board of Education's Fiscal Year 2021 General Fund Operating Budget. Dr. Bishop, will you call the roll, please?
Stauffer.
Aye.
Williams.
Aye.
Bickford.
Aye.
Fisher.
Aye.
Gessford.
Aye.
Murray.
Aye.
Ridenhour. Mackley.
Aye.
Thank you, Dr. Bishop. By my count, I have six affirmative votes with the student reps concurring, so our motion to approve the general fund budget is passed.
Mrs. Williams.
Yes.
Could I ask, could I ask you to reconsider item number two under new business? I think there's consent agenda that's there on emergency procurement, I'm not sure, but I think that requires recognition. I don't know if it requires actual approval or not.
Thank you for calling that to my attention, Dr. Michael. That was an oversight on my part.
Thank you.
So we'll go back to that. Thank you. Thank you for calling that to my attention.
I can make the motion. This is Peter Bickford. I make the motion to approve the emergency procurements for certified lightning cables and USB power adapters to group vertical at a cost of $98,820. School furniture and equipment through Duron at an approximate cost of $63,855.35. And Impact Office Products LLC at an approximate cost of $56,016.58. Walk-in freezer cooler replacement at Clear Spring Middle School to the Eagle Construction Company at a cost of $62,000. And custodial equipment to Wise Brothers at a cost of $48,418.38. Decon at a cost of $31,104. And S. Friedman &amp; Sons at a cost of $21,371.56.
Thank you for your motion, Mr. Bickford. Is there a second?
I second. Linda Murray.
Thank you, Mrs. Murray. Is there any discussion or any questions for Mr. Prue regarding this emergency procurement for the Board's ratification? Hearing no discussion and hearing no questions, Dr. Bishop, would you please call the roll?
Williams.
Aye.
Bickford.
Aye.
Fisher.
Aye.
Gessford.
Aye.
Murray.
Aye.
Stauffer.
Aye.
Mackley.
Aye.
Thank you, Dr. Bishop. I have six affirmative votes with the student member concurring. The consent agenda item, emergency procurement for the Board's ratification passes. Thank you. Thank you again, Dr. Michael, for bringing that to my attention. Okay, next item on the agenda is the consideration of the memorandum. I'm sorry, I'm getting feedback. Did someone say something? Okay, our under consideration is the memorandum of understanding between the Washington County Board of Education and the Washington County Teachers Association regarding the change in health insurance plan. Mr. Prue?
Thank you, Mrs. Williams. So if you'll indulge me a moment, I'll talk about the next three items all at one time. While the documents are three separate documents, they are one item. The healthcare committee, which is comprised of an equal amount of members of each of the bargaining unit members, and four staff representing the Board of Education, along with our consultant Gallagher, and, excuse me, Roger Gallagher and Company, have reviewed the plans that are available to our employees and their families, and have come to agreement to move from three plans to two plans. Our three plans are all very similar, specifically what the two plans known as our standard and our premium plans. They both contain in and out-of-network service. Our limited plan is only in-network service, and the parties have all reached agreement to move from the three plans to two, eliminating essentially the premium plan and changing the naming structure of our plans to out-of-network and in-and-out-of-network coverage plans. And with that, I'm happy to accept any questions you may have on each of the three documents.
Thank you, Mr. Prue. Okay, I'm ready to take the first motion which addresses the memorandum of understanding between the Washington County Board of Education and the Washington County Teachers Association. Is there a motion?
Madam President, I move for the acceptance of the memorandum. Pardon?
Thank you, Mrs. Fisher. Were you finished?
Oh, no, I didn't specify which one. Somebody interrupted me. The memorandum of understanding between the Washington County Board of Education and the Washington County Teachers Association.
Thank you, Mrs. Fisher. Is there a second?
Mr. Bickford, seconds.
Thank you, Mr. Bickford. Is there any discussion, any questions for Mr. Prue? Hearing none, we'll move to the vote. Dr. Bishop, would you call the roll, please?
Bickford.
Aye.
Fisher.
Aye.
Gessford.
Aye.
Murray.
Aye.
Ridenhour.
Aye.
Williams.
Aye.
Mackley.
Aye.
Thank you, Dr. Bishop. I have six affirmative votes for acceptance of the MOU, and the student member concurs. Motion passes. And now, a motion, please, for the memo of understanding between the Washington County Board of Education and the Washington County Educational Support Personnel.
Madam President, I move for the approval, Mrs. Fisher, of memorandum of understanding between the Washington County Board of Education and the Washington County Educational Support Personnel regarding the change in healthcare plan.
Thank you, Mrs. Fisher. Is there, is there a second?
Second, Gessford.
I'm sorry, who was that again?
Gessford.
Thank you, Mr. Gessford. Thank you, Mr. Gessford. Is there any discussion or any questions for Mr. Prue regarding this MOU? Hearing none, we'll move to the vote. Dr. Bishop, would you please call the roll?
Fisher.
Aye.
Gessford.
Aye.
Murray.
Aye.
Stauffer.
Aye.
Williams.
Aye.
Vicford.
Aye.
Mackley.
Aye.
Thank you, Dr. Bishop. I have six affirmative votes with the student member concurring, and the motion is approved or passes, and the memorandum of understanding is approved. Okay, we have one more MOU, and this is between the Washington County Board of Education and the Washington County Association of Supervisors and Administrators. Is there a motion?
Madam President, Mrs. Fisher moves for the approval of the memorandum of understanding between the Washington County Board of Education and the Washington County Association of Supervisors and Administrators regarding the change in healthcare insurance plan.
Thank you, Mrs. Fisher. Is there a second?
Gessford, seconded.
Thank you, Mr. Gessford. Is there any discussion or any questions for Mr. Prue? Hearing none, we'll move to the vote. Dr. Bishop, will you call the roll, please?
Gessford.
Aye.
Murray.
Aye.
Stauffer.
Aye.
Williams.
Aye.
Vicford.
Aye.
Fisher.
Aye.
Mackley.
Aye.
Thank you, Dr. Bishop. I have six affirmative votes with the student rep concurring, so the motion carries, and we have approval of the MOU. Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Prue. Our next item under consideration is the change to the 2019-2020 school calendar. Dr. Bishop?
At this time, we're requesting the Board's approval for changes for the school calendar. We'd like to request that Thursday, April 9th, Friday, April 10th, Monday, April 13th, and Tuesday, April 28th be changed to student days. On our current calendar, April 9th and April 13th are marked as snow makeup days, and April 28th was election day, which has now been moved.
Thank you, Dr. Bishop. Is there a motion?
Mr. Vicford moves to request Board approval for Thursday, April 9th, Friday, April 10th, Monday, April 13th, and Tuesday, April 28th be changed to student days.
Thank you, Mr. Vicford. Is there a second?
Gessford, seconded.
Mrs. Murray, second.
Okay, Mr. Gessford, I'll take your second. Thank you very much. Is there any discussion or any questions for Dr. Bishop?
This is Stan Stauffer. Dr. Bishop, for those out there who may be listening, Good Friday, of course, is a Christian religious holiday and so forth, what the Board's policy or ideas will be about for those who want to celebrate that day.
Dr. Michael, would you like to answer that question, please?
Yeah, I mean, we would always observe religious holidays for individuals, whether it's teachers or students, if for any reason the student can't participate or teacher can't participate because of religious holiday, and teachers are aware of religious holiday that makes it in the contract, certainly students would have an excused absence for Friday, but they obviously would have work they would need to make up if work was assigned on Friday.
This is Mr. Vicford. I have a question.
Go ahead, Mr. Vicford.
So, Dr. Michael, are these days, do they cover our deficit from our, for extending spring break, or does it basically, for anybody who's listening, if we have our normal school year, though nothing's normal about this end of the year, what does that do to when students are out for the summer?
Well, it's a really good question. What we don't know what's going to happen, the first two weeks that the state closed schools for two weeks, there's been no indication whether those days will be waived or not waived, or even the Board will be allowed to consider it. Likewise, the next five days last week, again, not clear whether those days will be waived or whether we'll have to make those days up. In our opinion, we provided a Keep Learning website for the first two weeks, schools that were available, and some students obviously were engaged in that. We had a soft launch of our Keep Learning effort, our distance learning effort this past, this current week, or last week, I'm sorry, and obviously this week, we're in full-blown online learning, as well as our other variety of resources and ways you can access learning during the next several weeks until we find out what's going to happen with school. So we don't know, but what we do know is, or what I believe I know, these four days, as I'm going to request to Dr. Salmon, that they count as student days, that they count towards the 180 days. If any days are waived, or the Board has the option to accept waived days, that would be up to the Board to determine whether they want to accept those days or not, but these would count as four student days and would reduce the need to continue four days further in June at this point.
Okay, thanks very much, Mr. Gessford.
Mrs. Williams?
Yes, Mr. Gessford.
Thank you. I understand the reasoning behind this, but because of Good Friday, I will not be supporting this in a positive way. My vote will be no.
Thank you, Mr. Gessford. Do we have any other questions?
Mrs. Williams?
Yes, Mrs. Fisher, is it Mrs. Fisher or Mrs. Murray?
This is Mrs. Murray.
Yes.
I just want to say that I understand Mr. Gessford's concern, but I think that families doing distance learning will get to judge for themselves if they want to honor that as a holiday. They could perhaps, you know, do their work on Thursday, do their work another day, but I think that, you know, it's up to the individual, and I'm going to support it.
Thank you, Mrs. Murray. Are there any other questions or comments? Hearing none, then, we'll move to the vote. The motion is to approve as student days, making a change to the calendar, Thursday, April 9th, Friday, April 10th, Monday, April 13th, and Tuesday, April 28th. Dr. Bishop, would you call the roll, please?
Murray.
Aye.
Stauffer.
Aye.
Williams.
Aye.
Vicford.
Aye.
Fisher.
Aye.
Gessford.
No.
Mackley.
Aye.
Thank you, Dr. Bishop. I have five affirmative votes, Murray, Stauffer, Williams, Vicford, and Fisher, one vote in opposition. The student member concurs with the majority. Our next agenda item under consideration is a possible nomination for the Maryland Association Boards of Education's 2021 Nominating Committee. Mabe. Hello?
Yes, Mrs. Williams, I'd like to nominate you for that position.
Okay, so we have a name place the nomination. Is there a second?
I would like to second, Mrs. Williams, Mrs. Linda Murray.
Thank you, Mrs. Murray, for your second. So we have a motion to nominate and endorse Melissa Williams as a candidate for Mabe's Board of Directors. Motion made by Mr. Gessford, seconded by Mr. Murray, Mrs. Murray, excuse me. Is there any discussion, any questions? Dr. Bishop, would you call for the roll, please?
Stauffer.
Aye.
Williams.
Aye.
Vicford.
Aye.
Fisher.
Aye.
Gessford.
Aye.
Murray.
Aye.
Mackley.
Aye.
I have six affirmative votes with the student member concurring. Motion carries. Thank you.
Thank you for your service.
Excuse me?
I say thank you for your service.
Oh, thank you very much, Mr. Gessford. That concludes the new business that we had for this evening. We'll move to the superintendent's report. Dr. Michael?
Thank you, Mrs. Williams. A number of reports tonight. Some time ago, some concerns with new members to our society at the Potomac Center. The Board asked us to look into the possibilities of moving Marshall Street to Funkstown Elementary School now that that'll be vacated for next year. I did direct staff to do the equivalent of a feasibility study without going into great costs with an architect. Normally, those types of things are $75,000 to $100,000 to investigate that way. I felt that our staff had the expertise to take a look at those facilities, consider what would have to be done to the Funkstown School for accommodating our Marshall Street job development students. And at this time, I'd like to ask Mr. Prue if he would just provide a brief update to the Board. Thank you.
Sure. Thank you, Dr. Michael. Board members, as Dr. Michael indicated, we did task the Facilities Department with doing that review. Mr. Rollins and Mr. Criswell led that charge. They met with Dr. Gladhill and with Sarah Stare, the principal, at the Marshall Street Center to review the specific program needs and determine what were the necessary program elements for the Marshall Street and the Job Development Program to see how they might fit into the Funkstown School. By way of giving you a little bit of background, the Marshall Street School is a nearly 50,000 square foot facility, actually 49,945 square feet, built in 1976, and has had some minor modifications over the years to support its individualized educational programs. The Funkstown School is 24,197,000 square feet, so slightly a little less than half of the size of the current Marshall Street building, built in 1967. Among areas that would need improvement, of course, would be significant ADA needs within the building to meet the specialized needs of the students for the Marshall Street and the Job Development Program, in addition to just needing additional square footage. Additionally, we looked at also outdoor spaces. The Marshall Street and Job Development Program have a greenhouse. They have an ADA-accessible playground that was recently installed over the last five or six years. The school has a full generator required to meet and support the medical needs of those students. We would need an additional bus unloading and loading canopy and an expansion of the parking area. Staff utilized state funding dollars as we would with our CIP program to put a rough estimate on the planned expenses. It would be approximately a $19 million project to bring the building into line with what is needed with the current building. We're probably looking at anywhere between a 24- and 36-month period, depending on whether the project would be done specifically with just local money or whether we would involve the state and put it as one of our CIP projects. That would extend the time if we went for additional state funding for this project. Staff believes that with additional minor modifications we could make to the building by the students return, the secure vestibule will be completed. We have not seen any issues with the new neighbors, and that is an ongoing item that we continue to watch and will watch over time. We also want to raise to the Board's attention that in addition to the Marshall Street students in their proximity to the Potomac Center, we have five other facilities that are within three-quarters of a mile of the Potomac Center. So we could address one building, but we would have several other buildings also that potentially we would have students at risk. So, you know, this is really in the Board's hands. If we did do this project, it would delay a number of other projects that potentially are of need as well, and staff can proceed at the Board's discretion.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Prue, and we'd be glad to answer any questions the Board might have at this time. I just wanted Mr. Prue to bring to the Board's attention, you know, really the direction that we're sharing at this time. I think it's important, absolutely important, that we protect our children in Marshall Street Job Development, but equally, it's important to protect all the children in the area. So I'd like to make sure we turn our attention, keep constant attention on the security of the Potomac Center and their clients from our children. And again, as Mr. Prue indicated, we haven't had any issues so far, and we do have additional security vestibule to be opening, and we can continue to work on enhancements as we see fit going forward. So that was our update. We'd be glad to answer any questions. There's no vote or consideration this evening, and right now, at this point, we're not recommending that we move forward with it further unless there's a different direction from the Board. Thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Michael. Are there any comments, colleagues, any questions that you have for Dr. Michael or Hey, Dr. Michael, would you like to move on to your next report?
Yes. Obviously, COVID-19 has been on the minds of everyone. You can't turn the news on without hearing ongoing reports and updates and concerns with COVID-19. Obviously, schools are closed as a result of that right now. We are following, you know, the direction of the Maryland State Department of Education, Dr. Salmon, listening to the Governor and President, other people that are providing some direction regarding the closure right now. There's a lot of things that'll need to be considered, depending upon what happens over the next couple of weeks, whether we're to reopen schools based on our current closure date. It'd be hard to believe that's going to happen based on all that's happening right now, but you never know. I did task, probably at this point, a month ago, Dr. Bishop and Mr. Prue to kind of be our co-chairs of helping us keep all the pieces and parts up and in front of us regarding what we needed to do to help with students, and I've just asked them to briefly share any comments they might want to share with the Board regarding our efforts to keep our students safe, to keep our programs moving forward, and wherever you are as far as the COVID-19 updates. So, Mr. Prue and Dr. Bishop, or, yes, Dr. Bishop, if you have any comments, I'd appreciate you making them at this time. Thank you.
I think maybe I'll take the lead and begin, and Dr. Bishop will follow. I think it's important for the Board to know that staff is continually in consultation with a number of parties. We talk regularly with representatives of the associations, the Washington County Teachers Association, and the educational support personnel to keep them abreast of any new information that we have, any new initiatives that we have coming, and we talk generally at least twice a week and email probably daily with those organizations. We're in regular communication with Mr. David Hayes and Earl Stoner, who are leading the Emergency Operations Center for Washington County. I also continually talk with Sheriff Mullendor, who is leading the Logistics Section of the EOC, as we talk about supplies. The Board of Ed, among other things, has been able to release some of our hospital-grade disinfectant. With students not in buildings, we've been able to reduce some of our supplies, and we had regular shipments coming, to be able to provide that so that fire, rescue, police, Merediths, other agencies would have disinfectants that would be regularly available. I am also representing- I am also representing the Board of Education and the school system on a every-weekly Wednesday call with municipal governments. We generally have staff, either Mrs. Howells, Mr. Jacoby, or Mr. Ganley, who are on a, I believe now, a three- or four-time-a-week call with other county officials. That happens every, mornings at eight-thirty in the morning. For a while there, it had been every day of the week, but I think now it is down to three or four days a week. Senior staff is pretty well bunkered down here at CES, maybe working from home one or two days a week and doing remote work, but still continually meeting in this building because there is still so much going on. Principals are doing a yeoman's job out in schools, taking care of their buildings, doing building checks, monitoring, make sure we don't have leaky pipes and those types of issues, handling the mail, picking up packages for their buildings that are delivered here to CES. So there are regular, ongoing activities. Dr. Bishop?
I would just reiterate, as Mr. Prue said, that we are working daily, and the situation, of course, is constantly changing, and we're trying to get as much information as possible and be as thoughtful when making decisions and taking next steps. So I'd certainly like to thank our community for their collaboration with us.
And with that, we'd be glad to entertain any questions the board might have. I do want to express my appreciation to principals who have been on the job every day. Again, as Mr. Prue has indicated, checking their building, being in their building, responding to a lot of phone calls, a lot of prep work, preparing for the distance learning opportunity. Again, communicating with staff, just a lot of efforts there. A couple other just odds and ends of things I'd just like to thank them for and make the community aware. Early on in the effort, there was a request for the hospital for additional supplies. So we asked principals to go into all the health suites and find all the N-95 masks they could, all the gowns they could find, all the gloves they could find, and bring all those to the central office. And within a few hours, we had all that gathered up. We put it on several skids and shipped several skids over to the hospital, you know, for their use, and they were very appreciative of that. Within a day or two, we had a request from hospice for any goggles that we might have, not something so much the hospital would use, but something the hospice was interested in. We put out the same request. Principals went into science labs, shops, all those types of areas, and actually secured goggles. I was surprised, we had somewhere between two and three thousand goggles. We lost count after two thousand, still had lots of them to box up. We sent those to hospice, boxed them up, had some team members here, dropped them off. I did receive a contact from one of their board members that if they indeed had enough there at hospice and the hospital locally did not need them, that another hospice in another area needed those. And I did copy the board members on an email indicating that if they could be put to good use to help, you know, service, you know, people particularly might be in an end-of-life situation, we certainly would want to see those things be used to support the medical community in that fashion. So that happened. We got a call then that the hospital was running out of face shields, protective gear that they use, and could we possibly help with some 3D application? Actually, a request came from a citizen in an email to me, and I said I would check with the hospital. Within a few minutes, the CEO, Malik Joshi, got back to me and said, yes, they could use those. We started a very labor-intensive process of printing a four-hour design on twenty-four 3D printers that we have over at the Innovation Center, and we slowly started cranking those out with some degree of success. The hospital was very appreciative of that. We continued to work with a couple of local architects and came up with a new design. The hospital continued to need those, and we continued to print them, and the hospital continues to need those. They picked up thirteen hundred of them on Monday, and they picked up four hundred of them today. The team is over at the Innovation Center right now printing, and tomorrow evening, we anticipate that we will cross the three thousand mark. And we're hoping that's getting close to what the whole community would need, between nursing homes and potentially Brookline and the Ark and the hospital and some other entities that have asked about these as well. So a lot of efforts going into a lot of things like that. Today, I made a request to principals to search all the custodial closets and custodial carts and secure as much hand sanitizer as we possibly can. And they're to deliver that to us on Thursday. The hospital's made a request for hand sanitizer, and we have, I think we have some supply of what they might need in order to continue the healthcare of our community. So they're one of our partners. I know they'd be willing to help us out in any way that we, they could help us, and we're glad to help them out. And I appreciate everyone's help in helping to gather up all these materials and the community's help in particular, as we moved into this distance learning, which we're going to talk about next. Mrs. Williams, if I could just segue right into that?
Absolutely. Thanks.
You know, it's a, kind of, a month ago, six weeks ago, we had no idea we'd be in the middle of distance learning at this level. We've explored distance learning for a variety of reasons and thought about it as snow day makeups and various things, and we always saw a lot of challenges to how we could make that perfect for every student, and we continue to have those challenges. But credit to Dr. Q, the instructional staff, Laura Hanks, Amy Siler, all there, teammates, all of our curriculum supervisors and content specialists were pulling together the backbone of a curriculum outline for our online learning efforts. And tremendous amount of credit to our teachers, suddenly thrust into unfamiliar territory, much like the board tonight with this conference effort that we're doing to try to bring the meeting to the public. You know, always a few touches when we jump into a new technology. But I'd like to ask Dr. Q if she would just share a little bit about our distance learning plan and how we have various components covered and what we're doing to try to reach all of our students the best we can. Dr. Q?
The district offered initially a keep-learning website for digital and downloadable resources for parents and students. The team also created offline learning packets for grades pre-K through twelve. The pre-K through two materials and learning packets are being mailed weekly for families so that they don't have to rely on the online portion of the class. The grade three through twelve learning packets are picked up each Thursday by principals to provide for those students who do not have even intermittent Internet access. The learning goals and suggested activities for the week are planned purposefully and strategically by the content specialists, and this support allows teachers the time to become accustomed with these new tools. Teachers have worked very diligently to prepare themselves and to be very creative in their connections with students. The distance learning plan itself was created by supervisors, revised by all of our administrators and reviewed by the association, and then shared with teachers and families in two separate websites. Now there's distance learning information available on the WCPSMD.com website. And it's just important to remember that during this time, the goal is not to really try to replicate a typical face-to-face student day. Our goal is to provide structure and support for students to be engaged in meaningful and strategic learning until students and staff can return to school, whenever that may be. My own daughter was doing calculus, pre-calculus, on the porch in the sun the other day, perfectly happy to do so. So if you have any questions at this time, we're happy to entertain them.
Thank you, Dr. Q. Colleagues, do you have any questions for the last two reports, whether it's news about distance learning or Dr. Michael's COVID-19 update? Any questions or comments? And I guess, Dr. Michael, we can move on to the fourth thing on the list.
Well, in the midst of all the closure and all my everything else, Kerwin has wrapped up to a certain level, and now the legislative bodies had to take a break based on the COVID-19 crisis, and it's a little bit confusing what's happening out there. Plus, there's a tremendous amount of financial uncertainty, I believe, all of a sudden. I'm going to ask Mr. Trotta to keep track of that effort for us, but at this time, I'd like to ask him to offer some comments, as he can, at this point, regarding Kerwin updates. Mr. Trotta? I don't know if Mr. Trotta's going to come on here or not. I think what we've done, we followed the Kerwin initiative to the point that it passed before the legislative body went into, I guess, a recess until sometime late in May, I think it is at this point. A lot of Kerwin passed as it was written. Again, there's a great deal of uncertainty about what will happen there. Mr. Trotta has some more information. He can cut in anytime if he comes on the line.
Yes, thank you.
Go ahead, Mr. Trotta. Thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Michael. The Maryland General Assembly abruptly ended the 2020 legislative session on March the eighteenth, but one of the last pieces of legislation that they considered was the Kerwin legislation, which is also known as the blueprint for Maryland's future. The bill was fast-tracked, and quite frankly, there was only a minimum amount of time set aside for public comment. The bill has some very specific purposes. One is to provide students with instruction and skills set to international standards that will enable them to be successful in the 21st century economy. They want to eliminate opportunity gaps, and they want every student to reach their full potential. The bill is two-hundred-and-thirty-five pages long, and it's extremely complex legislation. The blueprint creates eight new governmental entities that are vested with a wide range of duties, including creating new academic standards, developing new curriculum, creating new assessments, conducting studies, and they will be monitoring all twenty-four local boards of education in Maryland to make sure they're complying with the new requirements. I want to highlight some of the key provisions of this bill. The first is that it creates new formulas for funding public education. One of the major changes in this bill is that it shifts a significant share of the cost of funding public education from the local governments to the state government. And this is particularly true in the case of our, here in Washington County. The bill also dramatically increases the level of services that local boards of education must provide. So, for instance, local boards of education are currently providing behavioral health services for their students. They're going to have to further expand those programs. There are family support services that are provided, they must be expanded. The pre-kindergarten programs must be further expanded, and the career and technology ladder, I'm sorry, career and technology education programs must be expanded. This new bill also establishes a career ladder for teachers, and the bill provides that by July one, 2026, all teachers must receive a salary of at least sixty thousand dollars. This bill is going to be really expensive to implement. And I want to point out, and this is rather significant, that prior to the enactment of the blueprint, the Maryland Department of Legislative Services examined all twenty-four local school systems in the state of Maryland to determine if they were adequately funded. And even prior to the enactment of this bill, twenty of the twenty-four local school systems are not receiving the level of funding that they need in order to provide educational services. Unfortunately, Washington County Public School System is currently one of the twenty systems that are not adequately funded. I want to caution the board and the community that at the very last minute, the blueprint was amended to address a concern that the state might see a significant drop in its tax revenues. So there's an amendment in the bill where they're going to examine the projected revenues that were projected on September twelfth, 2020. They're going to look at those projections in light of the new projections they're going to do on December one of 2020. If it turns out that tax revenues are down by seven-point-five percent below the September thirtieth assessment that they've done, then they will not fund the bill as they had promised. They will only increase funding to account for inflation. So this is going to have a significant implication for local boards of education across the state of Maryland, and I think it's reasonable to anticipate that we will see a dramatic decrease in state revenues over the next several months. I'm glad to entertain any questions.
Thank you, Mr. Trotta. Colleagues, do you have any questions for Mr. Trotta?
I have, I have one.
Yes, go ahead.
Mr. Trotta, do you see, or Dr. Michael, do you see anywhere that there's any extra money that will be coming to Washington County Public School System in the year 2020, 21, or 21, 22, if this bill passes?
We have seen some projections on potential new revenues. But one, but that's uncertain, and I'll tell you why for two reasons. The first is, the bill has certain earmarks in it, but the governor is permitted under the Maryland Constitution to make a determination that those earmarks should not be funded. So we're not going to know until some point in the future whether, number one, does the governor veto this bill? If the governor does not veto the bill, will he fund it fully as it's set forth in the bill? But the other concern would be, as I've explained, is that if tax revenues are down by seven-point-five percent, then the level of funding that's currently in the bill is not going to be provided to local boards of education. They're going to see a much reduced amount coming their way, and they're going to have to adjust their budgets accordingly.
Thank you.
Madam President, I have a question, Stan Sauffer.
Yes, Mr. Stauffer, go ahead.
Mr. Trotta, is there anything that, any pressure that local boards can bring on the state legislature to postpone implementation of this law, especially in the light of the present situation, both educationally and physically caused by the COVID-19 pandemic?
Certainly, there can be, we can provide letters to the key leaders there behind this legislation and bring to their attention our concerns and seek assurances that adequate funding will be provided. So that is one option that can be exercised.
I'd like to see that done. I'd like to see a statewide effort on that. I don't know how you could start it with the other local boards, but I know from attending the May Legislative Committee meetings, there's a lot of concern, especially from the smaller counties, and counties the size of Washington County, about funding and implementing this bill in light of COVID-19. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Colleagues, any further questions? Hey, Dr. Michael, back to you.
Hey, my final feature this evening, certainly want to recognize a tremendous group we have out in the schools, our library media specialists. We are celebrating and recognizing School Library Month. Unfortunately, we are doing that distantly. We're not able to get together and recognize our media specialist and particularly Johnna French, our supervisor of library media. I can tell you that we do need all the effort of our media specialists. They do a great job, not only with helping the children with the library materials, with technology materials, but being our technology coordinator of the building. Elementary, middle, and high, they're all just a tremendous group. They also have been some of the folks that, as they've had a few minutes here in the last couple of weeks, they volunteered to help with the headgear printing for the face shields. We've had some people volunteer for that. And Johnna French herself, our supervisor, has had a key role in that. We've actually gathered up all the 3D printers from the library, matched the 3D printers of the Innovation Center, and Ms. French had a tremendous coordination effort in that. When I put out the word to her, I needed to say no more. She was on it right away, gathered up sixteen, seventeen printers, had them over at the Innovation Center, helped hook them up. She has helped work several nights, and I regret to announce tonight, they'll still be retiring after twenty-four years of service with us and two years of service outside of our county, September first. Ms. French has been a tremendous asset for library media. Ms. French has been a tremendous asset, uh, for library media, for projects like the, the, uh, face shield project. I will have fond memories of Ms. French, uh, helping us move when we moved into Pinkhorn and Bogansville, also supporting the move into Rockland Woods when we moved three schools, two schools at once. Uh, she was a major player in helping us move technology at that point, moving libraries at that point. Uh, and she will be sorely missed as one of our supervisors come September first. So to our library media people, I just want to have a big shout out, uh, for recognition for School Library Month. I regret that we're not together to celebrate that and also want to congratulate, uh, Johnna French for a job well done. And I know she's not done yet. She will work hard right to her last day, but congratulations to her celebrating her last School Library Month with Washington County Public Schools. And again, thank you to all of our media, uh, specialists out there. We greatly appreciate your efforts. And with that, Mrs. Williams, I'll turn it back over to you.
Thank you very much, Dr. Michael. Okay, our next agenda item is Personnel Action. Dr. Bishop?
Good evening. As discussed earlier in closed session, there are several staff changes for your review. At this time, I ask for your approval of today's personnel actions.
Thank you, Dr. Bishop. Is there a motion?
Madam President, Peter Bickford moves for approval of the staff changes as presented earlier in closed session.
Thank you, Bick, Mr. Bickford. Is there a second?
Second, Mr. Stauffer.
Thank you, Mr. Stauffer. Our vote is on the Personnel Action as presented to us today in closed session. Dr. Bishop, would you mind calling the roll?
Williams?
Aye.
Bickford?
Aye.
Fisher?
Aye.
Gessford?
Aye.
Murray?
Aye.
Stauffer?
Aye.
And Mackley?
I do not vote on Personnel Action.
Thank you, Dr. Bishop. I have six affirmative votes. Personnel action is approved. Thank you, Dr. Bishop.
Thank you very much.
We'll move on to reports to the board. Under reports to the board, we have committee reports. Due to the COVID-19 situation, we have not had our committees meeting. I don't know if there are any reports that have kind of been left out there hanging. If so, would the committee chair please speak up now?
Yes, Madam President, Mrs. Fisher on behalf of the Policy Committee?
Yes, Mrs. Fisher.
Um, we did meet back on March the tenth where we reviewed and completed both the policy on educational equity and the policy on diversity. Originally, both of those were to have been on the last business meeting for first read. Um, obviously with the confusion of everything going on, it hasn't gotten put on, but they should be coming up. We also discussed sections E, J and K of the policy manual, which covered support services, students and school community relations. We will be reviewing eight of the policies from the section on students at our next meeting. However, the date for that meeting is yet to be determined.
Thank you very much, Mrs. Fisher.
You're welcome.
Anyone else?
Mrs. Williams, this is Linda Murray from Curriculum and Instruction.
Yes, Mrs. Murray.
We did not meet in March where we were going to review the AP Government Text. I sent a link to all of my colleagues today in an email and it can also be viewed by the public on our WCPS website.
Thank you, Mrs. Murray.
You're welcome.
Anyone else? Okay, thank you, colleagues. We'll move then to miscellaneous business. We have one item of consideration there, future agenda item. You have a future agenda item list included. If you have any questions about any of those items, please let me know. If you have any suggestions for an item that you would like to see on a future agenda, please let a member of the Agenda Planning Committee know. That would be like me, Mr. Stauffer, Dr. Bishop or Dr. Michael. So we'll move now to Board Member Comments. Mr. Mackley, would you like to begin?
Sure. Um, can you hear me?
Yes.
Um, yeah, I would just like to, uh, say a huge thank you to all the staff and all the teachers that are putting in hard work through this transition. Um, I've been really impressed, uh, with how smoothly it's kind of gone. Um, and I've only heard positive things from other students. Um, so I just want to say thank you for that.
Thank you, Mr. Mackley. We'll go alphabetically. Mr. Bickford?
Uh, thank you. Just, I echo Chris's statements. I've been, um, impressed, very impressed with, even, you know, my wife is a, a media specialist, so I, I'm glad that Dr. Michael praised media specialists today because I hear her and how busy she's been, um, and how difficult it is to be away from her students. And I'm, I love seeing all the posts that Dr. Michael's been forwarding to us of the creative ways that not only our teachers, but even our principals are, uh, are, are working to stay in touch with the, um, students. Um, and, uh, hopefully we can make it through this. And we're certainly learning a lot about technology so we can see what works and what doesn't work and, uh, we'll be all the better for it. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Bickford. Mrs. Fisher?
Well, this is a very difficult time as we all know. And I understand that there are some things that have upset some people, but please know that, that the entire school system is trying its very best. There are so many challenges ahead of us right now, so many unknowns. And I think some of the things that have been accomplished, not only by our teachers and principals, but by staff that have been working to supply, um, whatever items we can possibly make or find or come by to help this horrible pandemic. Um, I just want to thank everybody that has worked so hard. Please, uh, um, pat yourself on the backs a little bit. Take a, a couple of minutes to thank yourselves. I know the community does thank you. And I just want everyone to follow the rules, be safe, be well, and hopefully we'll weather this out together.
Thank you, Mrs. Fisher. Mr. Gessford?
Thank you, Mrs. Williams. I do, um, want to add a few things. Uh, our custodial staff has got to be, um, you know, rewarded and just, and just praised for being on the front line of cleaning our schools, keeping them ready. Uh, because we know that we will eventually go back to school and we know that they're going to be ready for that. Um, our food service workers who are every day, uh, working the front line, getting our meal machines out. Um, we have some fantastic food service, uh, employees that are out there, um, doing a, a heck of a job. Also, um, I'd like to thank Dr. Bishop for her support, um, with this transition from the board of getting our technology, um, and to, for a lot of us who are, um, not savvy on the computers, uh, for her work and diligence, uh, with Jeff Prue. And also a shout out to Chrissy Ramsey, who is, uh, her technology department has really been working with all of us. And, uh, thank you, Dr. Michaels, for everything that you have done in the past. Um, I, I can't even imagine how many perilous nights, um, that you have been, um, up awake trying to figure this out. And I just have to applaud you and your staff for really going not just the extra amount, but I mean, just the long distance. Um, so many, so many people need to be thanked and you are the leader and we are very fortunate. Uh, I feel that we are very fortunate to have you as our leader at this time and, uh, your staff has just been fantastic. So, um, I just want, just, you know, just say thank you very much for all you do.
Thank you. We have a great... Red, I just, if I could, Mrs. Williams, we have a great team. ESP, teachers, administrators, everyone has really pitched in and been very flexible. I know there's a lot of anxious moments, but I appreciate the comments, Mr. Gessford. I'm sure the whole team does. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Mrs. Murray?
Yes, of course, I'd like to, uh, join in with everybody and I agree with everything they've said. We've never seen anything like this in our lifetime and we are all in this together. Everyone is working together to help each other and it's been wonderful. I'm so proud of everybody that I work with, um, my colleagues, um, the staff, Dr. Michael, everyone, um, just so impressed. And the parents, the parents that are working with their kids and some of them are working from home and working with their kids. And it's been wonderful. Um, I can't say enough good about everybody. This is really bringing people together and, um, you know, we'll get through this.
Thank you, Mrs. Murray. Mr. Stauffer?
Um, I just want to reiterate what... Can you hear me?
Yes.
Yeah, okay. I just wanted to reiterate, uh, what just about everybody else has said, the food service workers who've been putting out the meals to the students, uh, to the teachers, who are planning lessons and working from home and probably helping with their own children also, to the parents, uh, to the custodial staffs that initially cleaned the buildings after the, after the shutdown, to, uh, Dr. Michael for his great leadership and to his senior staff and all those who are helping him. And to the secretaries to go in occasionally, I understand, and sort the mail and do some things, uh, to help the principals and administrators in the schools, uh, just everybody, uh, working together to make this come about. And I especially want to commend, uh, Dr. Michael and his administrators and all those who've been helping with turning out the mask for Meritas Hospital or for Meritas Medical Center. Uh, truly a great thing. It's just a sign of the new technology that's out there. Imagine if you had to do that all by hand and do it the old-fashioned way when you can put it in a 3D printer and, and you get the mask and so forth. So great job, everybody, and, uh, this, this two shall pass.
Thank you, Mr. Stauffer. I'd like to say that I wholeheartedly agree with all that has been said. I'd like to thank each and every member of the Washington County Public School family. Not only have we provided materials and lessons to help our students continue their learning, we're feeding our children and we're finding the time and energy, many, many of those volunteers, to be in support of our medical community. My heart is full. Dr. Michael?
Miss Van?
Blessed to have you as our leader.
Oh, thank you.
And may you be blessed with continued strength. So if there's nothing further, I don't think Mr. Ridenear has joined us. If he has, this would be his opportunity to make comments. I'd like to say we've missed him this evening. I hope he's, he's well. So that concludes our Board Member Comments. And if there's nothing further, I'll adjourn this meeting.